Good morning. Good morning all.
Good morning.
Yeah, you're supposed to answer when somebody says good morning.
Well, good morning.
Alright, we're gonna get started for this meeting Wednesday, January 24th, 2018. And we'll have the roll call first, please.
Dong?
Yes, here.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Next we'll have the pledge of allegiance, everyone stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at that time the item comes up for planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This time we'll have the approval of the minutes of the January 10th, 2018.
Make motion that we approve the minutes of January 10th, 2018.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What we approved was a different date, but then we corrected it. Didn't say we corrected it, or...
Let the minutes reflect that we corrected the date from the 23rd to the 28th.
I second the motion.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of the items requested that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any of these items unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. Do any of these items need to be pulled? Not, then we will open public hearing for tentative parcel map number PPM 17-043. Parcel map PPM 17-047. That's it. Is anybody wishing to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion on parcel map PPM 17-043 to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and the state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 17-043 with a final map required.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
A motion for that.
I make a motion that we approve the categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to the new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 17-047 with an exception and final map waiver.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. At this time, we'll move to item number five. A tentative subdivision tract map, TSM 17-001. We have Dana here for us.
Aguilar, commissioners, this is a, as you mentioned, a tentative subdivision to divide an 11.52 acre site comprised of three parcels into six parcels in the RA 65. That's a rural residential, 65,000 square foot minimum zone. The environmental determination is a categorical exemption in accordance with CEQA. Let's see, pertaining to Section 15303, Class 3, new construction or conversion of small structures, and the project is compatible with this exemption because only six parcels are being created with the potential of six single-family residences. Entitlement is found in Section 4A of the zoning ordinance, the rural residential zone, which allows divisions of land so long as the parcels are being created meet the minimum acreage required in that zone, and this particular one is the 65,000 square foot minimum, and all of these parcels meet that minimum acreage. This is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff did receive one inquiry from the neighbor across the street who expressed concern about the location of the new street being proposed for this subdivision. She was informed that the road would be improved to a Class 1 county standard and that Road 132 would be constructed to a Class 2 road standard width, and she was satisfied with that information provided. This is the vicinity map. Project is located on the west side of Road 132, approximately 250 feet south of State Route 137, and it's inside the hamlet development boundary of East Tulare Villas, which is east of the city of Tulare. This is the land use map. Subject site lies within the hamlet development boundary of East Tulare Villa, which was adopted by the Board of Supervisors on December 5, 2017, becoming effective January 4, 2018. Land use designation for the subject site is mixed use, and our parcels are right here. The project is consistent with these Tulare County general plan policies. And these policies. This is the zoning map for the hamlet development boundary. These are our parcels right here. As mentioned, this is the RA 65 zone. The property to the north is zone C2MU, which is a mixed-use commercial zone and contains a rural residence. Property to the east is zoned RA 65 and agriculture, and contains rural residences and agriculture. Properties to the south and west are all zoned RA 65, and they contain rural residences. These properties were all rezoned to their current zone district with the adoption of the East Tulare Villas Hamlet Plan, 2017, and as previously mentioned, they do all meet the minimum size for the zone. The aerial photograph, our parcels are here. Close review, our parcels. No improvements on that property. This is the site plan. As mentioned, the request is to divide three parcels into six. All of the parcels are either 1.6 acres or 1.79 acres. The site is within the sphere of influence of the city of Tulare, and talks are ongoing with Cal Water pertaining to their providing water to the lots, and solid liquid waste will be disposed of through septic tank leach lines. Access is provided by a new public street, which will be stubbed. 60 feet right-of-way running east and west off of Road 132. A turnaround will be located at the west end. The road improvements within the subdivision will be constructed to Class 1, which include curb, gutter, sidewalk, and five additional feet of right-of-way along the west side of Road 132 will be dedicated in the form of a grant of easement, and this section of Road 132 will be constructed to a Class 2 road with 60 feet right-of-way. And other design features include public utilities inside the right-of-way. These are the subdivision ordinances that this project is consistent with. And the subdivision ordinance does determine who takes action on a tentative map, and that depends upon if the proposed subdivision is located entirely within an urban development boundary. Then the planning commission shall approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove of the tentative map with the right of appeal, and staff recommends that your commission approve the categorical exemption and the resolution establishing findings and conditions of approval for tentative subdivision tract number TSM 17-001, and that concludes staff's report.
Question? Dana, could you get Exhibit 8 back up on there for me? There on the west end turnaround?
Yes.
Big enough turnaround? It looks like the temporary pond's taking most of the turnaround out.
Public Works may be able to answer that.
The turnaround?
The hammerhead.
Yeah, the hammerhead, uh-huh.
It's sufficient.
Yes, it is.
That's sufficient for, if a truck goes in there or something, they can get that thing turned around? Okay.
Find the fire.
Right, okay, just, it doesn't look like it's, if it's at scale, it doesn't look very big. That was just, that was my question, just didn't look like it was very good, big, big. Oh, I guess my next question is, is that cul-de-sac too long for our coordinates?
660 feet?
Limit on our cul-de-sac?
How long is that?
Yeah, if you look at the bottom, it's 628 across the whole length, so with the pond, it's less than 6, probably 600 feet. And the reason that might look deceiving to you is typically you'll see a hammerhead at the end of like a 20-foot wide paved area, so with the full build-out of the class, the class 1, class 2, the 60 feet build-out, it looks a little bit smaller to you.
They show 70-foot width there.
Yeah, 70.
And the truck and trailer can get turned around on that?
Yeah, it's good for a three-point turnaround.
Okay, I'm saying.
My question is a simple one. Prior to construction of any houses, the water system will be put in, is that right?
Well, usually absolutely will serve letters are required a building permit, so they're working out a deal right now with Cal Water. Cal Water's also trying to work out deals with the city, so before they put a house out there, there will be a will serve letter, or there won't be, and there'll be a variance for wells. But that's all being discussed, and the owner can talk about his negotiations with the Cal Water.
One and a half acre for?
For lamp.
Like sewage?
Septic, it's, as we discussed last time, it's probably gonna be one acre, and these are one and a half acre lots.
Subdivision in Kings County. What I thought was interesting is that they create an absolute ban, I mean, it was a ban on one side of the lot that was for wells, and the other side was for septic. County rule, but I thought that was kinda helpful to not only developers like myself, but to prospective buyers to see where it is they can put those in, so that's just a comment.
And so Cal Water would have to put in a well though, right? Because there's no water system out there?
Well, they, the Cal Water does have a water system out there. They have a tank serving East Tulare Villa proper, but there's no water lines as of yet to this location, as I understand it.
So, excuse me, my question would be, that well could service this piece of property?
That's what they're discussing right now.
Okay.
Right, and then there's a process that they're interconnecting with the Tulare water system as well, connecting down by the COS campus down there, so this is gonna be ultimately, it should be all part of one large system, which is what the ideal is, to create a larger system that's more sustainable, but I don't believe this is serving. Yeah, but there is a well and a water system in East Tulare Villa.
Any other questions? This time we will open public comment if anybody wishes to speak on TSM 17-001. Please state your name and address. Yes, right there.
My name is Richard Ho, I live at 13171 Avenue 232. My mother once owned the land that this project is going on. I have no concern about the land use that this project proposes. The only thing that I'm concerned about is that they don't go for a bunch of wells onto the site. If they're going to get water from Villa, from their well on 228, I would be happy with that. If they're going to have their own well, I think that you should limit it to one. The underground aquifer runs from the oak tree on Road 132 diagonally across to the western boundary of this property, and the best place for that well would be on the southwest corner. If you put in too many wells, they'll drag down the water table and could cause the wells in the property to become distressed as well as the wells in the neighbors. So one well is much better. The farther you get the wells apart, the better chance you have of maintaining the water table so that you don't lose the flow in the pump and you don't pump up sand and other contaminants, and that's the only thing I'm concerned about, is that they don't put a bunch of wells down there and take all the water away. Draw a 45-degree angle from the water table to the companion well, and where those 45s cross, that becomes a de facto water table when the wells are working, so you could pull that water table down to a point where the wells would all fail. Thank you.
And that all gets addressed later, right?
Well, it can, but I'd also like the owner or the engineer to come up and discuss the potential for a community well if they can't get a will serve letter from
Hello? Cal Water. Hi, I've been working with Cal Water.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry?
Name and address, please.
Todd Holmes. 23005 Road 132 in Tulare.
And I'm Sean Dave with AW Engineering, 724 North Memmatics Way.
I've been working with Cal Water for the last probably six to nine months, offering them any assistance, because I live south of the project, and I am just about adjacent to their subdivision out there, and just offering them any assistance whatsoever I can with my lot, and supplying it with water, if at all possible. And I know there's work being done behind the scenes with the city right now, so I just let them know that I would be willing to let them do whatever they want to the back of my land if necessary.
I had a question, what level is the water table at currently?
I recently put a well on mine about two years ago, and we had great water at 160. My neighbor's currently at 170, or 180, I'm sorry, and, but we're actually deeper than that. But it's very good, actually.
It's our understanding, though, I guess what's happening with Cal Water and the city is that soon, or you know how that goes, these will be tying in to service this area out there for future development, so in the meantime, I guess this would be the temporary fix until they can go ahead and tie into that. Is that correct?
Can you please clarify what you mean by a temporary fix?
Well, the well site that he's gonna be...
Yeah, if we have to go that route, but like I said, I'm offering the use of the back of my land for whatever they want, and fully wanting to help them, you know, because I know that area without the city's help is very hard to supply right now.
So through the chair, you're offering, you are offering a community well for your entire project with one well?
I've told them whatever they need out behind my land, I'm willing to help.
So we would condition the project, if, we would condition this project, so if a will serve letter is not granted by Cal Water, in the interim, you would provide a community well to one well for all six lots?
That, I, that would probably require a, I mean, I would, but that would, wouldn't that require an HOA of some kind?
It could, or it could just be easements amongst all the owners in agreements.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that.
I don't think you have to go through the full HOA process.
Yeah, I mean, I'm up for, whatever works for all of us, yeah.
Maybe an HOA is not out of the question anyway, I mean, maybe that's a good thing.
Well, it's difficult for us to force an HOA.
An HOA involves, I've done it before on another project, and it's so costly and so incomersome, it's unachievable, but I don't have any problem with supplying it if there's another way.
Yeah, there must be, well, there's gotta be some sort of agreement for, to maintain the road and stuff, and it's not, it's gonna be a county road? Yeah. Oh, so that's, I missed that, I thought, that's not a private drive, then?
No, it's a county road.
Okay, never mind.
So, if there was a community well, just for clarification, it would require agreements, reciprocal easements in those agreements that go with it for reasonable use, et cetera, so that doesn't necessarily need an HOA, they're, by its own nature, will have agreements for that process, if he has to go there, if he wants to build homes sooner than water supply.
I'm gonna be living there the rest of my life, and my son's gonna be living on one of the lots, so I want what's best for everybody, yeah.
Do you currently know where the end of the water system is? It stops at Avenue 230? Is that where, does it go all the way up to the?
Cal Water?
Yeah.
Cal Water goes adjacent to the southwest corner of that, three squares there. They stop right there at the end road.
So it's fairly close?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, it's like probably 70, 80 feet or so. Yeah, I've actually met Cal Water out there at that corner site, and we've talked back and forth.
Problem with the will serve letter, if that's all it is?
Right, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem, but I just wanted to, belts and suspenders, make sure this project moves forward without any future coming back to the planning commission.
So we would add that condition on there? Thank you. Any other questions?
I own the house, my, I don't know why my parcel number...
Name and address, please.
Oh, my name first, right? Wendy Kazdorff Baker, and I live at 13095 Avenue 232, yeah, 232. Mine is the property without the, I don't know why my parcel numbers aren't on the map, but I'm those two right there. I have a front piece and then a back.
Which two?
Like, part of my property is red for whatever reason, and then my little back half, yeah, not that one, the one over to the, there you go. So part of it's red, and then the back piece is the, what is that, orange color? But I just had a question, if I would, the back part of my property, because it's two separate parcels, would I be able to have like a little tiny, I know this is a crazy question, but an access road to get to that back piece? I know there's already a gate there on my back property. It could just be a dirt road. Just because if we ever had to drill a well to our property, that's the way they'd have to come in, I don't know how they'd ever get back into our property.
So, but you have access through your property to that back property?
You'd have to drive like in the front yard across our leach lines, and then around the side of our house, you would have to, but I know there's a gate on the side of our back parcel for whatever reason, it opens up to his, and I don't know why it's there. We just bought this house two and a half years ago, three years ago, so I'm new to this. I didn't even know if it was a question I could ask.
Right, well, typically, just through the chair, you wouldn't necessarily have continued access, or you had access, I don't know if there's any agreements, licenses, easements between the properties, but generally...
I think it would be actually right next to his, the sewer thing he's gonna put there? It would be right at the edge of that, I think, is where it's gonna end up being.
The temporary?
Bond?
Bond?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you, do you have the property ownership?
Like this map?
The notice hearing?
The notice hearing on the slide.
You had it on the slide. Yes, it's one of the first.
I do? Well, I have the map.
Right, a little bit further.
Yes.
Okay, so you're the...
So mine's the two without the numbers.
Right, those two, okay. So currently, it should be access...
My house is the front one, and then the back one is just animal pins, and then our well sits right on the property line of the two of them, like kind of on my side of it, but right there at that line of the two properties. So I think we'd be right where his edge of his fencing is water.
Water base.
That's what I'm thinking, if we were, if there would just be like a little dirt road, it doesn't even have to be crazy big, but I don't even know if that's too much to ask. Like I said, I'm new to this, I never owned a house before this, okay.
So you want to access this parcel through their street?
If I could, I mean, it's not like I would do it every single day, of course, but if I just had, you know, because there's a gate already there, and the gate's wide enough for a...
Well, it's county street, isn't it? So...
It will be.
County road, so it's not their road.
Okay.
The detention basin would still be in their ownership. Well, let the applicant come up and see if they're willing to accept some kind of easement agreement with the neighbor to have access across their property.
The only, it would actually be, it's a temporary pond, so giving access to someone through that pond would basically be up to you guys, and I don't think that would be something we'd want.
Because I think my gate is right, right here at the edge, but on the side, so I don't know where that would be on your guys'.
Oh, yeah, that would actually be right there on the lot number one.
Oh, where the original property line is.
Yeah.
Through the, through the chair, actually, that's gonna be a public detention basin, and it's a temporary one until there is storm drainage available, so it'd be, create some liability issues for us to grant access even in temporary, but...
Say if we ever put a house back, not that I don't know that, I don't know what we're doing.
But you have access through your own property.
You'd have, yeah, you have to just drive across the front yard and then around the side and...
And, yes, it's not comfortable, but, you know...
I know a semi truck can get back there, of course, but I can get back there in my car.
It's not landlocked either, you do have access.
Okay.
Can you get to it from, from the west side of your property to the south? Couldn't you get to it from, from the west side of your property to the south?
Like going through the yard?
It's the front of our property, but you have to drive across the grass where our leach lines are at. But I mean, eventually we can cut our gates and make it work, I guess.
Access via one thirty, two thirty-two, they're coming off Tulare Avenue.
I just figured it was a question.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know all this county stuff works.
That's not good either, 'cause that's kinda dangerous coming out of there, too. They're coming pretty fast.
I don't think we can solve that problem.
Not, not today.
Not today.
Like I said, I have never been to one of these meetings. I don't know how this works.
Thank you.
There's gotta be a road around the con- detention pond.
No, she just never had access and she was just.
Well, that's what she's saying, that there's a.
Come in that gate when we, what did we have to do? We had to pour concrete in our backyard and that's the way we came with the cement truck.
Aaron says that. For the county to grant the access in writing, liability to the county, but if somebody wants to drive around it.
Well.
Uh, well, through, through the chair, I don't thi- think we have to answer that question. I think that's, uh, between her and the applicant, if he wants to give her an easement through his other properties, but the county is not in a position to, uh, grant an easement on that.
Thank you. Any other testimony? And at this time, um, we will close the public testimony. And if somebody wants to make a motion that includes the condition of a community well.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and make that a motion that we approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and State Secure Guideline pursuant to Section one five, three oh three, class three pertaining to new construction or the conversion of small structures and adopt the resolution establishing finding and condition of approval for tentative section subdivision, tract number TSM one seven dash zero zero one.
And, and the condition of a community well.
Or Cal Water.
Or Cal Water.
If necessary.
With the condition of the, uh, will serve, uh, the.
Go ahead and say the.
With the condition for a community well to be provided if they're unable to secure a will serve letter from Cal Water.
Yes, with that.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
CS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. The motion, yes, thank you. All right. Then we are, we are on to the, uh, director's report.
Short meeting.
Um, thank you, I.
Except for last, last times.
We'll, uh, uh, briefly talk about some community plan, uh, schedules for some updates. Uh, as you know, the Three Rivers Community Plan is out, the environmental document is out. So, we're looking to complete that process hopefully by the end of March to get a final EIR and then be coming to your planning commission for consideration, hopefully in April, and then getting to the board in, in late May or early June. Uh, the other plan that we have that are, that will be coming forward soon will be the Goshen Community Plan update. And that one, we, we, we should be releasing the draft environmental, uh, impact report for public review in the middle, towards middle to the end of February. And, uh, and as of our new policy, that anybody that wants will provide links and if a, if a commissioner wants a hard copy, just request it through Velma and we'll get a hard copy for you of that. Uh, hopefully the Goshen will be on a similar track, probably one meeting off from the Three Rivers, uh, thing. So, we'd be probably going again, hopefully in, uh, April to the, to your commission and then May or June to the board with, with that. Uh, community, or for the Cutler-Rosi Community Plan update, we're looking to start the public outreach he- here in a couple of months, probably, late February or early March, we'll start that process going. As well as Ivanhoe and Poplar Cotton Center, that's something that we might start in the spring of this year as well. That would be, uh, depending how well these other projects are going and, and our capacity to do that, we'd like to get those started as well. Uh, uh, back to Cutler-Rosi, all things work out great. We're looking at hopefully getting the draft environmental out sometime in the summer. If, if, if everything's going smooth with that, that's what the goal would be. Uh, yesterday regarding the, the, the local agency management program for onsite wastewater treatment, the board, uh, waived the first reading yesterday and, and they'll have a public hearing for that on February sixth. Also, last night, I, I attended a, a workshop in Kingsburg with their, their planning commission and city council regarding a, uh, the Hash subdivision, which is a Tulare County project, but it's immediately adjacent to Kingsburg and Fresno County and will be connecting up to their sewer system and their water system. And we're really, we're, we're gonna bring in forward a specific plan and we're adopting their ordinances, uh, their zoning ordinances specifically just for that. It's gonna basically be Kingsburg standards, Kingsburg's requirements and, but it's gonna be in Tulare County. There's gonna be a, uh, an MOU between the county and, and the city for providing, so, so there's no net loss to either agency or i- either jurisdiction. There'll be some tax sharing and, and, and agreements for services, uh, everything from, uh, code enforcement to, uh, health and, and safety, uh, law enforcement, fire response. So, we've kinda working out that MOU to, to do that. But basically, it's gonna, it's gonna be a Kingsburg subdivision, but it's gonna be located in, in Tulare County. So, with that, uh, there was a notice of intent to adopt the, uh, or there was a, um, release of the draft environmental impact report. So, that's out actually for public review right now. I, I believe it closes on February third. So, that's, if that's something you wanna get to, that was ahead of our change in policy of our last meeting. So, uh, that's available online with a link and, and Velma can provide that for you. And if you wanna get a hard copy, we can also provide that for you. Uh, the intention will be, everything going smooth, we're maybe looking at maybe the first meeting in March to bring that for your consideration would be ideal, uh, but we're, we're on a timeline sometime in March probably to get it, get it to you, either the first or the second meeting. Then we also have a, um, another project that's just, it's really a, a much simpler project. It's a, it's a parcel map, but we're having a, uh, mitigating egg deck for it. Uh, there's a few concerns regarding guarding neighbors that, that really are posed to it and, and they're bringing up some issues, so that's why we went, rather than just doing what we normally do as, as a, a category exemption, we're going with a full mitigating egg deck on the project. And that will be, um, that review period is ending, or just ended on that. That was, that was from December eighteenth, January sixteenth. And then we're looking to hopefully bring that to you in March as well, once we can finalize and respond to all the comments and everything and bring that to you in March, so.
Lot located?
It's in, it's in, it's in, uh, northeast of Visalia. It's in the urban development area boundary. It's not the urban, or it's, it's the, uh, the area boundary for, um, for Visalia. Uh, Visalia has no comments on it. It's a zone, it's a parcel map. It's currently zoned, um, AE twenty, I believe. And there's a, if you, when you look at the map, there's a, a, a ton of, uh, small parcels, two and a half acre, two acre, all around. This was a, this is a twenty-seven acre parcel. Part of it had been divided off previously to a, a, a number of, I believe, four or five, uh, two and a half acre parcels. They were wanting to take the twenty-seven acres, finish out the road wi- uh, by putting three two and a half acre parcels on and keeping the remainder as, as a twenty acre parcel. And they're actually going to put seven and a half acres into an ag preserve on that twenty acre, so that's gonna do that. So, that's, that's the project and, and you'll be able to review it thoroughly and we'll have, I'm sure there'll be a robust discussion by the public at that meeting because it's really, for them, it's very, very important, controversial for them, but, um.
Where was that again, in Visalia?
Northeast by Visalia. It's south of about three forty-eight, from east of, uh, uh.
South side of, uh, St. John's?
Oh, north. Yeah. So, as well, we, we can provide the link for that document and get up to speed on that. Um, just kinda give you the mid-year update regarding our building permits and, and whatnot. We're, we're at, uh, we've issued thus far through the end of the year, through the end of December, we issued nineteen hundred and thirty-eight, uh, building permits. That's a little bit lower than last year. Um, I think a lot of that can be attributed to, there's, there's a little bit of a slowdown or saturation of, uh, residential solar projects, because we were kicking those things out like through the door. That slowed down a little bit and I think that probably can be what you can attribute, the, the, the slight reduction. It's not, it's not significant, but it's a little bit less than last year. And our construction valuation through the end of the year is at eighty-nine million dollars, which is, again, is a, a little bit less. Last year, we did a hundred and ninety million for the whole year. So, we're a little less than half of what we did last year. So, so we're pretty much on pace, just slightly, uh, slightly lower than the levels we were doing last year. But some of the projects are some major projects. We just issued, uh, permits for Seton Warehouse at their facility and that's a, a five million dollar project. There, so there's a lot of big projects still going on out there. I think it's just kind of the numbers are down solely because of the solar rooftop stuff has slowed a little bit.
Is that their original site in Terabella or the new site?
That's their, that's their site in Terabella. Um, that, what they've done is when they abandoned the, the railroad down, down there, they had acquired some additional property, uh, so it kind of expanded their existing site. Uh, Porterville Citrus had purchased some as well down there. And that's where they put their park, the, the community park, the Seton built for the, for the, for the city or the, the town. Uh, and with their plans to expand, so now they, without that railroad there and without, um, uh, we had abandoned a piece of Clements Road that had, that had cut through what they owned, the property now. So, they were able to expand, Porterville to expand, and they're both going forward with projects on their, on those sites now. Dollar General's showing an interest on a site there, too, as well. Looks like there's, you know, there's still growth, there's still happening. East Porterville's Dollar General is under construction and should be open fairly soon. Goshen's, uh, is ready to be issued or they picked it up, I'm not sure. That's what I see, so there's a lot of activity still going on, certainly in the, in the county.
Ocean's store is almost completed, so.
Is it? Well, see, I haven't been by Reagan for, for a while. So, uh, so East Port- I couldn't recall whether East Porterville was ahead of Goshen or Goshen was ahead of Porterville. So, that would conclude my report. If you have anything.
No, we have to go back and work, so.
Anything?
All right, now what about the, anybody in, any of the commissioners have anything to add?
I just wanted to, um, I've seen the preliminary rep- or, uh, schedule now for the conference. And a couple of the highlights on there are a visit to a cogeneration plant in Rudding, a, um, tourist house to dam and, um, and there's a couple of other really interesting sites. One, I think, is a, um, a reclaimed mining area. So, the field trip day is shaping up to be really exciting and, um, we should have a schedule to everybody, um, certainly by the next meeting, which is in late February. So, we'll be, we'll be ready to go on that and.
The dates again are?
It's that weekend of May, I think it's May fourth and fifth.
Mother's Day.
No, it's the weekend.
It's the weekend before Mother's Day.
Fourth, fifth and sixth, I think. The hotel's now open, the Host Hotel opened January eighteenth on schedule. And I'm checking, you know, I, I left a message yesterday to see if the room block's available, but it's a brand-new facility built, it's sort of a Sheraton Boutique Hotel and it's built right on the Sacramento River. It's a beautiful site. So, I'll have more information on that and I'll try to email everybody when the room block's available also, so. Get choice of the rooms. It looks like it's shaping up to be a really good conference.
Any travel, uh, information on, you said something about a flight?
Well, there is a possibility on a charter. I've, um, approached my friend who's a teacher at Three Rivers School, that he charters out of Visalia and he's gonna get us a price and see how that works. So, we'll, we'll know that before we make arrangements. It's not a bad drive up there, but, um, you are looking, uh.
Yes, it is.
You're looking at four hundred plus miles or so.
That's a long drive, baby.
Well, split it up and enjoy it. But anyway, it's, uh, it's all coming together and if we can work out the charter from Visalia Airport, I think everybody really enjoy that, too.
Yes? And we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene on February twenty-eighth.